Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
I've given service to our city and to our state. We've got Kenny Anderson, who served for a number of terms in city council, and Jamie Smith was here. There he is. Jamie's here, and there's maybe others that I'm missing that are in the crowd, but thank you for your service. And Carly Reader is running it. She's already given six years to the school board, and so thank you for that. And my other candidates that are running, thanks for being part of our discussion this afternoon. Often, communities, and Sioux Falls is no exception, we pay more attention to national matters than we do what's going on here locally. It's really these local issues that have the greatest impact on our daily lives, and that's exactly why I'm running for school board. I'd like to make a positive impact on the 24,000 students that we serve daily, on our $176 million budget, and our 3,400 staff members that are part of our district. I have served as past president and treasurer of our PTO at John Harris. I'm a substitute teacher. I co-chaired the Facilities Task Force, which brought forth the $190 million bond referendum last year. I've also sat as a member on our Curriculum Committee, K-12 Curriculum Committee, as well as the Fine Arts Steering Committee. So, given that experience that I've had directly with the school board and as a stakeholder, as a parent of four that are involved in the public school, I feel that positions me to really carry out the momentum of education issues forward on behalf of you all as stakeholders. I was born and raised in northwest Iowa. And my name, I don't think I told you my name. I'm Nan Baker.
[laughter]
Nan. Born and raised in northwest Iowa, graduated from Central College in Pella, and then moved here in Sioux Falls, where I landed my first job at what was Western Surety Company, now CNA Surety. I spent several years with the Arts Council, and I'm now a community director for Youth Roots. It's a nonprofit that teaches youth about philanthropy. So, that's a little bit about myself, and I look forward to your questions, so you can get a better sense of who I am and what skills and leadership and direction that I may offer up to the board if I'm elected. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Carly Reader, and I'm currently serving my, finishing out my second term on the school board. So, I've got six years of experience. I was born here in Sioux Falls and grew up here. I went to Oscar Howell Elementary School, then Edison Middle School, and then Roosevelt High School. My husband, the same. He went to Bancroft Elementary, and then Whittier, and then Washington High School. Together, we have two daughters. I have a sixth grader who's at Edison and a ninth grader at Lincoln High School. So, strongly believe in the public school system here in Sioux Falls and have continued to be amazed at the programs and the instruction that we offer here. So, we have a lot to be proud of. My real job outside of the school board is I'm a nurse, and so I do work at Sanford. I apologize for my tardiness. Today, I got a call right as I was leaving, so I had to take care of something quick, but here I am. My time on the board, I've really thoroughly enjoyed. I've had the opportunity to work in different, many different committees. As board members, we're given different assignments each year, and this, one of my current ones I'm on right now is policy. And so, it's been very interesting to go through. We have a five-year cycle where we look at every single policy and say, is it reflective of our values? Is it reflective of what we're doing? And so, we bring those forward after reviewing those, and many times, they go out for public input to see if other people have ideas or thoughts on things that need to change. I've also participated on the Calendar Committee, which we all know has been a very hot topic in our community for the past several years. And so, I'm really trying to balance educational needs versus families' priority needs for a time off. You know, we have working families, and trying to say, do we want a big break? Do we want small breaks? What's easier for families to take time off from work to care for their children? Things like that. So, that's been an interesting process as well. Some of the other things that I have worked on, safe and secure schools. If you watch TV, you know that there's a lot of things going on in our schools, and so it's very important that we are keeping that issue top of mind, too. Along with educating our students, we want them to go to school and not just be safe, but feel safe, too. And so, we have a great team that looks at all those security procedures. We just had a report last week, or it's Friday, so it must have been Monday, about a plan for a reunification exercise that we're going to be doing here in Sioux Falls, so that, God forbid, something does happen. We have a great plan in place. I have practiced it. We did practice it four or five years ago as well, and so, just another great time to kind of look at new best practices that have come about in that industry. So, we are a collaborative team. We utilize a lot of resources of the experts in our community and on our board, and I look forward to hearing what your guys' questions and concern are, and hopefully earning your vote again for another term. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Hubbell. I'm going to read this, just so I stay in the constraints of the time here. I want you to remember the numbers, 49 and 26. Our teachers, at one time, were 49th in pay. At the same time, our administration was 26th. There is a discrepancy there, and I think that is where we need to, if we have budget shortcomings and stuff, that's where we need to address, is our administration pay and maybe even our bloated administration. And also, I'm thinking that we don't want to get rid of, do I need to stop and get that figured out?
No, keep going.
Okay. We don't want to have, to cut our art, our music, or go to a three-day work school week. I think those options just cut, just hurt our children. Those cuts hurt our children. We don't have to be, as a school board, we are your representatives. We represent the people and the teachers, and we're not supposed to be put on the board just to be a rubber stamp for the administration. And I think that's where we need to watch our steps when we're on the board. We have, right now in the city, a $21 million bond that is kind of going wayward. The taxpayers may be on the hook for all that. We have a $190 million school bond that I don't want to see go the same way that the city bond did. I will be a watchdog for that bond, making sure that we spend our money correctly. I don't want to be entertaining some of the contractors that are on the city. Realize that one investment group has been hired by the city, and they don't even have a contractor's license and any of their investors there. I do have a contractor's license. I have a real estate license. I have a nursing license. I'm a secondary teacher. My mom was a professor at USD, so we love education, but I'm also Dutch, which means that I'm pretty cheap. I want things done well and done with, you know, for a good price. But I guess my real concern here is that, one, is that, look at the voting districts. There's only 13, as opposed to 57. In the north part of Sioux Falls, there's none. We need to make sure that our north side and all of our people have access to the polls, so we can vote more freely in school issues. And I guess my heart in all this is that I just love kids. The older I get, the more I realize that they are so precious and profound, if you just listen to them. I teach, or help a Sunday school at Central Church here, and I have the preschools, and I pray every time, oh, God, help me to understand the three-year-old language, because I want them to be understood. I want to meet their needs. And that's exactly what I want for the Sioux Falls students. I want them to feel safe and productive in this society. I want them to set their own destiny, not have it set to them by somebody else. And I want them to feel safe in schools. I want them to want to go back the next day. And I think I can provide an environment like that in our Sioux Falls schools. Laura Hubbell, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Anderson, and I just want to thank you for arranging this, because as a newcomer, nobody knows who I am. So, it's great to, for people to get to know who I am, why I'm here, and my background, and what my vision is and my plan. I spent most of my life in Sioux Falls, went to Bancroft, went to Catholic schools for a couple of years, went to Little Flower, Christ the King, and then ended up going to Patrick Henry. And my principal's here. Once your principal, high school principal, always your principal high school. So, I was asking him, can you post or take a picture with me, so I can share it to our loan page? Because we still talk a lot, and our 30-year high school reunion was great. And so, anyway, I'm glad to see you. It's been nice to see you again. You haven't changed a bit. And I haven't either, right? So, and thank you for adding a Democrat to the state. Thanks for coming and joining us. We could use as many as we could get. So, I have two daughters. I'm a single mother, two daughters. Isabel is a junior at Washington. She will go to Lincoln to graduate, though, so I'm kind of happy she's switching over there. And then Ella goes to Patrick Henry. She'll be a seventh grader. I'm in the medical profession. I work remotely at home for Park Nicolette in Minneapolis. I tap into their EHR system. I have a lot to do with fighting Medicare, our medical denials, coding of charts, and making sure the patient's responsibility is correct, because it's, healthcare is a problem, and it is my passion, making sure everybody has access to healthcare, especially mental health and our kids. It's very important, because that has a lot to do with your outcomes. If you're not feeling safe at school and you have social behavioral issues, you're not going to score good, no matter what the teachers do, no matter what we try to pull away and add more of education to the day. Kids need to feel safe. That will have great outcomes for their grades. Like I said, I actually started to run because bullying was such a problem. Luckily, my daughters aren't bullied, but I do have some good friends that their kids don't want to go to school each day, and their parents' hands are tied because their kids beg them, please don't say anything, because if it gets back to that child, it's going to make it worse for me. And so, it breaks my heart, and I feel like I have a voice, because my daughters aren't begging me not to talk up about bullying. So, I started out with that, but then I started talking with teachers. My neighbors are, is a retired teacher, so she invited me over to their knitting group. So, there's five teachers that get together and knit, and so I sat with them, and I said, how many years' experience are in this room? And they had, we added it up, and it was 187 years of teaching experience. And the main thing they told me was, you know, we don't feel listened to, because if we speak up, there's repercussions. So, I feel like the public, we are the ones that have to speak for them, and we can't say who they are. They have to remain anonymous. And so, that's another reason. I'm here to speak up for the teachers that can't. The budget, I agree with Laura, the budget, and we have $180 million bond. If it goes the way the city bond is going, we're in trouble. Thank you.
I suspect in this room, we have more than 187 years' teaching experience. I'm not sure Fred has that all alone. We're going to take questions now, and we ask that the questions be in the form of questions, and if you've got commentary, go schedule for another time. So, try to keep the questions short, so we can get the most questions in here.
How would you like us to do that?
And we'll just pass, let's back and forth here, okay?
My question, I'm a one-time mental health advocate, and you spoke about mental health. We know that so many children who struggle with mental health issues are suspended from school, kicked out of school, end up in places that they don't belong, because our school system can't or won't adequately meet their needs. How will we meet the needs of your position, of these kids who are not being educated in our school? Do you want to take that, or do you want me to take that?
Oh, you've got the microphone first. Okay. Well, I'll just start out by saying that currently, the district has well over 100 staff that are dedicated to behavior issues. We spend resources on 24,000 students daily, and given that there are a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of things that are really going well, and there's areas of improvement, most certainly. We do have specialized teachers and curriculum that help to manage and care for all the students and give them a higher level of social skills, social behavior skills, social emotional skills than what they show up with school on the first day. I also want to say that we do do bullying intervention. We have a relationship with Lutheran Social Services in their mentorship program. We also have Southeast Behavioral and use some of it, bring their expertise in for the training of staff, as well as overview of curriculum that's being used. So, kids face challenges, and the district is doing their best to identify those challenges and those behaviors, and it's a constant moving target of continual improvement to the curriculum and changing the scope of what the needs are. So, thank you for that question.
Yeah, to piggyback on some of the things that Nan mentioned, we just recently had a work session as a board on some of the things that we're doing regarding social, emotional learning in our schools. And we have several different pilots going on at elementary, middle school levels to try to do some of those interventions. Some of those things start with basic things, where we're not targeting just a student that we think may have a mental health issue or a small group. It's really for the benefit of all students, because we all have a mental health. Whether that mental health is strong today or not, it may vary for some people, and it may be more extreme for others. And so, by teaching all of our students the types of skills like mindfulness, some of those breathing exercises, ways to calm yourself, ways to regulate your own behavior, ways to be able to express your feelings, because I think that's part of it, is unfortunately, young children aren't able to verbalize how they're feeling. They know they don't feel good, but they don't know how to bring that to somebody's attention. And so, by talking about those things in our classrooms, incorporating those into our curriculum and our lessons, we're able to help students with those types of things. We, oops, I probably lost. So, we are doing different things in our buildings, and we're tracking them to see what are the ones that are having the best impact, and how can we take some of those skills and move those to other buildings that have higher needs. We do have lots of staff that work with them. One of the things that I would really like us to take a look at is our school counselors. We have, we have counselors in every school, but our ratios are nowhere near what the recommendations are nationally. And so, counselors cost money. They're professionals. They're well-trained and educated. And so, again, with budget issues, we have to look and say, what can we prioritize and how can we rearrange those? Unfortunately, I feel like a lot of times, our counselors spend time dealing more with some of the behavioral issues than they are able to help with, whether it's mental health or even career planning or college planning with our students. And so, finding and, finding a balance and fine-tuning that and looking at FTE and the numbers that we have available, I think is an important step to take.
Do we have a timer? I'm sorry. I don't want to make, I don't want to sit and talk and talk. Does it matter?
No.
Cut us off if we need to cut off.
Anybody falls asleep.
Okay. The snoring is our timer.
I'll listen for the snoring.
I think a lot of the problems that may be perceived here is that I don't think our teachers or our public have a lot of access to the school board. I was at a school board meeting, and I was sitting next to a teacher, and she was sitting next to a reporter. The reporter asked her, you know, a question, can you comment on this? She goes, oh, no, I can't. I'm a teacher. And I was appalled. I said, what? I mean, our teachers have their First Amendment rights taken away because they fear something? That really bothered me. And so, I thought, that's not going to happen if I'm on the school board. We need public information. Another problem, they said, that the public at school board meetings do not get a lot of access time. So, we need to pay attention to our teachers. They're the front-runners for mental health, you know. Give them some training, maybe give them some help. And I also think that one thing that we can do is to decrease the triggers for anxiety in our kids. I think that one month of testing, I think that's an anxiety trigger for our kids. For me, if you would have taken away PE or recess, I would have had a meltdown if I was in third grade. You know, we need to have, you know, activities for our kids. We need the PE, the recesses. We need the therapeutic classes, like the art and music. Those things are being looked at to be taken away. That's another anxiety trigger for our kids. So, let's keep those anxiety triggers down. And also, you have some questions. I used to have some really good answers of what is available. You know, what is available, I think we should probably have more public, so the public knows how to access it.
Thank you for your question, because that is my, why I'm actually running, is for the kids. And I feel that we need, they need to have a day-to-day, we need to work on their day-to-day social and behavioral and safety, and that's where we're lacking. We have all these programs there, but I think it's going to really come from the kids that we, you know, they have all these programs that the principals and the teachers are putting on them. I want to get them actively involved and have them be the leaders of this movement, and that's why I have Cool to Be Kind as my hashtag. I used it as an adult, being a Democrat in South Dakota, to have people's opinions that come at me that is, that is pretty rough, and our kids learn what they live. And I've had to say, cool to be kind, and it's really, it worked. It didn't escalate the conversation. It ended, you know, the differing that went back and forth. It's like, you know what? Let's go back to the basics. It's cool to be kind. We need to change the tides, because right now, being a bully is popular. All the kids, the kids that are going in the bathrooms, using their cell phones, beating each other up, posting it for the public, is why kids don't want to go to school. Parents are getting phone calls, saying, your daughter's, there's a video of her being beat up at the park. So, this is the reality we live in. And I also think social media got us there, and it can also get us out. It's free. We don't need to get consultants. We don't need to pay for extra programs. We just get engaged with the kids and have them be the leaders of the movement. Give them a voice. Also, one of my big things, I started running to be there for the voice for kids and get this movement going, but I learned, and I did not know, that we have the Title I schools. We have three clinics on-site at three of the schools. We could bring in telemedicine. That is the huge thing right now. Telemedicine is available. We could actually bring those into the other title schools by getting a computer system. And Medicare, Medicaid does have funding for states to bring them into the schools. Minnesota, it's already on the legislative floor, and that could bring in more counselors. Do we just utilize the counselors we have with the computer where the child can go down to the office, the nurse's office, hook up to the telemedicine visit, get the medications they need? And this is mostly for the kids that, you know, their parents are too busy. They're working more than one job. They're single parents. It's forward-thinking. It's not saying, oh, we have programs in place. We need something new, something that doesn't cost money, and that I, be in the healthcare field and passionate about and know how to implement it. So, and I think, right now, on the counselor thing, it's, we should have one counselor for every 250 students, but it's 1 to 350. And South Dakota isn't alone. That's across the country. That's why we're seeing these school shootings. That's why we're seeing all these issues, is because there's a shortage of counselors and money. So, telemedicine would be huge in helping, having kids have access to a counselor via telemedicine at their school. Thank you.
I would like to ask you, if he was your principal, was the guy behind him a counselor? Because Floyd Hucking over there was a long time Lincoln High School counselor, and I don't think he ever considered himself an expensive resource. But I would comment that a few years ago, the Counseling Association had a 350 to 1 K-12 mandated counseling ratio, and the former governor came in and did away with that. I don't think we have a required ratio right now, and in fact, there's no requirement that they have a counselor. Sioux Falls is fairly in good shape of that, thanks to somebody, but that needs to be looked at at the state level, if there'd be a better requirement. We got people, Jim, you hit your hand up first.
My question is, could be considered a softball question. The Constitution of the United, Constitution of South Dakota says very specifically that public money can only be expended on public schools. And a few years ago, a law was passed that allowed insurance companies to basically reroute their tax money to private and appropriate schools. I would like to have your response to that, how you feel about that, and if elected to the Sioux Falls School District, would you fight very hard, not only as an individual, but trying to mobilize the school district against those kinds of encroachments on the South Dakota Constitution?
When I was in the legislature, I found that if it was in the South Dakota Constitution, they didn't care. I was, I was appalled. I approached the leadership when I was there on a few occasions, saying that this is unconstitutional. And I got the letter of reprimand, because I was not a team player. So, that, there is no respect for the South Dakota Constitution, and that frustrates me as well as you. Another thing in the South Dakota Constitution, we can't have any corporate farms. Do we have corporate farms?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, my frustration is with yours, and yes, I am a firm believer, in fact, that I have actually done a stint in the Constitution Party, just because I so believe the Constitution, and it should be obeyed. So, yes, I agree with you. The Constitution is the letter of the law. It's very unfortunate that our leadership does not respect that.
Thanks for taking that first. I am the newcomer, so what I have done, because I'm a newcomer, is I've listened to legislative sessions. You know, during work, I kind of play it and listen to see what the state is trying to come in and bring into our local. And as far as taking any money away from public education, I would be against. There's private schools for a reason, and we need all the money we can get. I, so I would be against that, and I would fight very hard for that. Like I said, I've been listening to all the school board meetings and a lot of the legislation, education legislative sessions, and there is overreach. When they're trying to teach, tell teachers what they can and can't teach, there was one bill, I can't remember what it was, but it was stating that they thought that teachers were teaching children how to picket and teaching children how to be gay or lesbian. And I was, I was in shock. I thought, wow, I'm learning a lot. I came in here to help kids being bullied, and I'm finding out what's happening in politics. And like I said, I would fight very hard for children's rights, for the money for them to have their education and their fair share. And definitely teach, that, it even said that teacher, they were saying that teachers shouldn't have an opinion outside of school, like they should be even at the grocery store and not have a political opinion. And one of the legislators said, I'm always on. And my wife asked me, when I go to the grocery store, why did it take you two hours? It's because he's talking to people about stuff. And I thought, well, you're in an elected position. You might have to wear that hat at the grocery store, but teachers certainly shouldn't have to wear that hat, and they should have an opinion. And granted, they're not going to teach, you know, kids in school to be a Democrat or Republican, but they certainly can have a life outside of. So, I do think there's overreach, and I would speak up for that and show up for it at sessions. Thank you.
Good question. This was a very hot topic among the board the last couple of years when the legislation was introduced, and we did have our lobbyists from, that represents the district in peer, working to try to make sure that this bill didn't pass. We firmly believe that public money goes to public schools. The, we have the privilege and the honor of educating every single student in Sioux Falls. It doesn't matter whether you are the highest performing or the lowest performing. It doesn't matter what disability you have, what color you are, what race, what religion, any of those things. It is our commitment to educate every single student, and we need taxpayer money in order to do that. Private schools can select who it is that they want to educate. They can select who it is that they grant admission to. And so, that does not reflect the public taxpayer money. It should not go to them. The money should go to supporting that community that we all live in. And so, we did work very hard unsuccessfully and have continued to make sure that that for sure does not advance. And if given the opportunity to undo that, that would definitely be something that we would work towards. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Carly. And to take this issue, because we don't want to belabor it too much, but I think it also, in addition to the encroachment that we're bringing up, I think it's also important to identify the state funding formula and the importance that we have locally to be able to opt out. It's important that each community, such as ours, that we get the decision whether we're going to follow the state funding formula or go, or opt out. And currently, we do opt out, because that allows us to meet the needs that we have right here in Sioux Falls. We have different needs than what they do in rural South Dakota, and having those pieces of local control are critically, it's a critical important funding stream for the Sioux Falls School District. And we start our budget with the, with the needs. What are the needs? And then we look at what the state revenue is, and if there, we know what the deficit is. So, we've been able to balance our budget in the past, and we would want to set that present going forward, all the while, knowing that our, our lobbyists are, for home occupied property, we're the lowest in comparing our neighborhood schools, Lenox, Brandon Valley, T, Harrisburg, and for commercial property, we're the second lowest. So, as a school board member, I want to continue to watch our lobbyists and look, and so that we're good stewards of the resources that we do get in form of those taxes, and continue with really a no-frills type of budget. At the same time, we're delivering a great product, and that's our students, so that they're prepared to go off into, into our world and make a great impact. So, thank you.
We've been very concerned about the voter turnout last year in the, in the opt-out for the new schools. We've been concerned about the, a large group of citizens have been concerned about the fact that your, the school's finance department runs the elections. We've been concerned that the, that citizens aren't being allowed to be part of the process. We're being excluded from things. We have a serious concern that we haven't had an 85% voter acceptance of a school bond issue that was actually only allowed to be voted on in the southern part of the town, and the people in the northern part of the towns had no chance to be able to walk to a polling place or make it convenient. What, as school board members, are you going to do to correct the situation and bring the public back into the process that we own? We are citizen owners of this school district. We are citizen owners of this government, and this school board, in its current makeup, has refused to allow the citizens to be part of the process of educating these children and to be able to speak on how we want our taxes paid.
Okay, so I feel like there were a lot Okay, so I feel like there were a lot of questions in there. In regards to, and I do not know off the top of my head, do we use these same polling places for that bond election?
We have 57 polling places for city elections.
Okay.
We are going to the vote, we've been doing the vote center. This year, as I understand it, this will be the last time they will be allowed to use a vote center type concept. And we have found errors. I do a lot of data mining on voters, and I find that a lot of voters actually aren't even tabulated in the process because as I just went down to vote a few minutes ago, there's only one person sitting in that room when there should be two people in that room verifying everybody being able to vote and verifying that it got put into the record book. I have serious, serious problems. What are you going to do?
All right. Thank you for that question. I can feel your passion with that, so I really feel it's important that we tackle this. So, thank you. Last spring, I was part of a very open and transparent process. We had 30 members of our task force. They were all from a very diverse background, whether it was retired schoolteacher, teachers, coaches, some business community, a very diverse group of people. We worked independent of the Sioux Falls School District Board. So we're independent people working on behalf of the taxpayers to address the challenge of growing enrollment through the Sioux Falls School District. So I like talking process, and I think that's what you're touching on, this process and how it's important to have an open and transparent process. And so through that, we started first with getting, doing surveys with the staff and the, and the teachers to, to talk about growing enrollment. And the reason why I bring this up is because perhaps, as I'm talking and telling you the process that we put in place to get to the $190 million bond referendum, that something within that context might ring true to what you, to help facilitate a process to look into the issues that you're passionate about.
No, let me clarify. Let me clarify. We wanted to be able to be part of the voting process. We understand the process the school district went through to, to run through your process.
Yep.
We don't care about that at this point. That was advocacy and education. What we want to know is what we're going to do to fix the voting so we don't have 85% wins on these types of issues and the narrow ability to vote.
Okay. So that's what I'm getting to. Maybe put a process in place to get other people to open up that sort of discussion precisely with what you're talking about. Get some other input. Get a diverse group of people around the table. And I think you framed it up exactly how you wanted to frame it. That would be your discussion topic. So put your process in place of getting, getting stakeholders around the table, a diverse group of stakeholders, opening it up for public input, opening it up for media to sit on, on the, on the meetings, open it up for, that's what we did. We had very open and transparent process. Anybody can come and be part of any of the meetings. So that would be my recommendation, is to start, get, get some of your stakeholders around the table. It sounds like you have it framed up, and come up with that process and
The state law has.
See what you can do. Yeah. Good luck.
Yeah. I will be the first to tell you that as a member of the school board, we have never had anything to do with setting the locations for where people vote. That has never been a conversation that we have ever had as a board member. I feel like that is the election committee or the election supervisor that does all that information. We get the timeline of when things are due and where you show up to vote, when your paperwork is due, things like that. I get the map, and I tell people, here's where you can vote. So that has never, that has never been a decision that we've been asked to participate in making or even a conversation that we've ever had. Right or wrong?
Well, then I would say that we should probably take the bull by the horns and actually be involved in that process. Because one of the reasons why I brought this article here, or page here, is because there are normally 57 places for you to walk and to vote. We have 13. So people are going to go to, say they're going to go to the Girl Scouts of America, and they're not, they're not going to be able to vote. They're going to be confused. And I know, I know some people who are poll watchers, and they say people come and they don't have, they don't realize that they can't vote here. 13, and there's supposed to be 57. That's, that's a problem. And I think the school boards should address that, even if they haven't in the past. We need to, we need to take the bull by the horns, like I said, and make sure that that's in the process. One thing that bothered me was that 85% passage of a $100 million bond, has that ever happened in the history of anywhere? Usually, bonds are 50/50, very close to 50/50. It bothered me that, that all the ballots were destroyed within, two days, was it, after? So there was no checks and balances on that vote. That's, that bothers me also. I think we need to have poll watchers. I think we need to have more public input instead of less. This, to me, shows we don't care about the public. Okay? I think we need more open polls in, yeah, the, the school boards. If they don't deal with it now, we need to deal with it in the future.
There's 81%. So it's very close.
It was a $190 million bond referendum.
Yeah, $190 million bond referendum.
Okay. Thank you for the question. I have heard others have the same concerns. Me being a new person, I, I'm in the position to be able to ask questions like that because I need to learn what's going on, and I haven't had my input yet on that. And as far as transparency, when I started the process for running, I needed, I have a lot to learn, so I was listening to those school board meetings, and I had questions about how did they pick the 30 people on the task force? Who are they? I couldn't find that information. I couldn't find minutes to that, those conversations. I also couldn't find video of it. I did find one video, and it was the last meeting. And to me, I'm like, who picked who got to be on that task force? Was it representative of the community? And there's just, there seems to be a lot of ties to who's on the board and who ends up getting the contracts, who ends up getting the bond. And that's a lot of interest we have to pay. Did we put in there that, hey, do we get to, to relook at the interest that we're paying over these 10 years and renegotiate that? That's the questions I would have asked, because it's a lot of money. And I believe we're already over budget on the land purchase. We had that 35 acres from Sanford. They were, they were, did their research and said it was the best spot to pick that location that we did. Well, I believe we're $400,000 over budget on that land purchase. We were given $1 million as a donation, and from who? I don't know who that's from. Is it from a construction company? So there is transparency, and that's why the community is upset. We don't feel like it's transparent. And there is work to be done on that. And I would say, when I have watched the school board meetings, when parents come up to talk, it is very structured. I would like to see more town, town meetings where we can actually ask the school board a question where they actually can respond to us. A lot of it is, we just, you know, parents or teachers, parents are able to ask questions, but then it's done and over, and there's no response. And I just feel like there's a better way. So I appreciate your question. I know you're not the only one that has that thought. And to be brutally honest, that's why I'm not voting early at the Instructional Planning Center. I want to vote at a regular polling center, and that's just me personally. I just want to make sure that vote gets to where it needs to be and is as secure as it can be. Because I probably don't have as popular opinions as the rest of the people running. I don't have the experience, but I think that's good. I think it's the perfect timing to have someone that's new, new perspective, and isn't afraid to speak what's on her mind, even if it's not popular with everybody. Thank you.
So to clarify, clarify, the early voting is at the IBC, not the Columbia Building?
Correct. Correct. It's at IBC.
Okay. I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
What's the address of the IBC? Off the top of your head?
It's on 301. 301. 301. 301 East 38th Street.
Okay.
It's by Robert Frost. It's near Minnesota and 38.
Behind IBC.
201 East 38th Street. Thank you.
Couple of quick ones. Laura, could you tell us what the northernmost voting location is on that map, please?
It looks like Career and Tech Cadd Academy.
Is there one off of Benson Road?
Benson Road.
Be Benson and
Like Merricar?
No, it'd be Benson and Cliff.
Be one of these.
There's a fire station.
No.
Wesley United Methodist would be like 6th and Cliff.
Okay, so there's nothing above 6th Street in, in the city as a voting center?
Yes, there, there's 6th Street. There's 9. Kenny Anderson? Kenny, you said it?
That's
Is that a shameless plug?
What I'm saying is, you, the problem that we had as a city at one time, and I'm seeing it in this election also, is that there's a whole region section of people who are not being represented there. The voting center for the northern area, North Cliff, you have Norton Acres, you have Norton Frolic, you have Granite Valley. There's a lot of citizens up there, there's no voting center. The voting center should be the fire station off of Benson Road and Cliff. You've eliminated that. You've taken those people out of the voting process. That's what I've heard up there, is that they feel that they are not wanted or that they, they just feel that they're left out of the whole process. There's your, and that's your example right there.
Noted. Thanks.
Thank you.
I worked 35 years at the Earth Resources Observation and Science Center, known most people in town as Eros Data Center, which is one of the leading geographic science centers in the world, not just the country. And the last I heard, Sioux Falls School District stopped any geographic education at the eighth grade. Would you make any plans to introduce geography as a high school curriculum so that students that are interested in this field could be feeded into the universities and then eventually work in Eros?
Well, my dad was a geologist for the state, and he was in Eros quite a bit doing data collection. I think Eros is an incredible gift that we have to South Dakota, and we have a lot of gifts in South Dakota. Do you realize that South Dakota is wealthy in oil, natural gas, diamonds, jewels, gold, silver, rare earth minerals, and yet we're a welfare state? I think, you realize that the wealth of South Dakota is not going to the people. And I, that's just kind of an aside, but yes. I think one of the reasons that happens is because sometimes kids can get fooled. And I love the sciences, and I think that the geography is incredibly important. So, yeah, we need to be teaching our kids geography, sciences, anything on how not to get fooled when they get older.
Laura, can I take that? I believe currently, and Carly's verifying this, that geography is a mandatory class for ninth graders to take at the high school level. I know my son, he, he took it, and I think they had both advanced geography as well as the regular geography class at the ninth grade level. But what I also want to touch on is just this idea of partnerships that we have within the community. Just yesterday, Sioux Falls School District, they now have a partnership with DSU, and they're calling it the, they launched their partnership yesterday, and it is called the South Dakota Pass, and it's very relevant because right now, the Wall Street Journal last weekend had an article that said there's 300,000 cyber jobs that are currently open across the nation. So it's partnerships such as the one with DSU that will help to, that will help students jumpstart their college credits towards this, this space of cyber technology in, in that field that relays into what you're talking about, getting the kids into the sciences with the Eros Data, Data Center and doing geography. So the, the school district's looking for those types of partnerships because one of the most pressing issues is making sure that our students are educated and ready to go on into a, a changing world and that we're preparing them, you know, as best possible for the changing world. So thank you for your question.
I'm just trying to find the specific story, but the app online is not as great as the actual website. So students do have to take a geography class. They have a choice between a world geography class or a AP, and I think it's called human geography would be the other option. But they do have to take one of those classes to graduate in, it's a semester-long class. I don't know without looking if there are further geography classes that are offered beyond that, that are available, but we do have that as a requirement for graduation from us, from us Sioux Falls High School here, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a great question. I'm not well versed in, you know, they came up with a lot of good comments. I don't know if it's something that's offered at CTE Academy, if there's any classes, do you know if there's any classes at CTE?
It's just so standard.
It's a standard.
Further, like, like, I think you're talking about further education through the next four years versus
Like an advanced
Yeah, advanced courses. It's definitely something I think all ideas could be looked at, and
The human geography is the advanced. It's an AP class.
Okay. But like further, like, like CTE Academy, if people wanted to get into that
I mean, that's as far as you can go, that's for college credits. Human geography is an AP class.
I understand what AP is. Thank you. So it sounds like it's already taken care of. So that's great. Thank you.
My question is for Laura Humble. I've actually become familiar with, with your background recently, and I have a question. Why should we forget that background? And I'll give you three examples. Recently, a Child Protective Services employee committed a very bad act, and your response was to demand closure of the Child Protective Services. And that would throw thousands of children into, I guess, on the street, with no protection at all, that currently are getting protection from Child Protective Services. And I think you don't understand the benefits of that, and I'll bring that up again. You have opposed the Affordable Care Act because of its deception
You have to speak louder.
Thank you. I'll redo again. A Child Protective Services employee committed a very bad act, and your response is
Can we just get to some quick questions?
Tom, you made your comment, so let him know.
We're at three minutes to one.
Three, three things. One, that a demand to be opposed to Child Protective Services because of one person's actions. Another is that opposing the Affordable Care Act because of its deception, pronyism, and forced control over a person's destiny. And I'll point to my brother-in-law, Wayne Aaron, who is perhaps alive today because of the Affordable Care Act. He lost his, in his job when his company went bankrupt and lost his insurance. And it was over a year before he could get insurance because of his very significant condition and get treatment for his problem. And without the Affordable Care Act, Wayne, would you raise your hand, Wayne? He may not be here today. And the only thing that it, that it being protected from deception and pronyism and forced control over his destiny, it is worth losing his health. But the third, and the worst concerning to me, is the opposing the opt-out. It is your job, it is the job of the board, the school board, to balance benefits and costs. And the problem is, there's a total lack of understanding of benefits of the expenditure of our tax dollars. And, and that seems like one side of the approach to things, your individual statements built only with money and not with the, the benefits of education and the need for education. So I think that that one side and few of things is something that very much interests me, and I'd like to have you tell us why we should ignore that.
Sure.
Well, thank you for being an observant citizen here. And yes, the Child Protective Services has a need, absolutely, but I think more of it should be with our law enforcement. I think there's a lot of people in Child Protective Services who have to meet the quota. You realize that since 94, I think Bush and Janklow got together and they made bonuses for taking kids out of their homes. $5,000 bonus, $10,000 bonus. We don't need these bonuses. In fact, under Dugard, you know, child protection rose 39%, I mean, 39% more of our kids were taken out of their homes and put into Children's Home Society. Do you want that? No, I, not Children's Home Society. I want, I want that money spent with helping the families, to keep the families together. I'd rather see that than having government, you know, policy, government entity or nonprofits, or not really nonprofit, using our kids for money. I'd rather, I want the kids in a nuclear home. That's where we should spend the money, not CPS. Also Affordable Care Act, I said 10 years ago that you're going to see your deductibles raised, and you're going to see expensive care, and you are, we have always taken care of the people in need of healthcare. We had the Hill Burton Act when I was a young nurse. You cannot deny anybody of medical care in America. Affordable care has cost so much. It's got to, you know, right now, Affordable care goes to a whole bunch of bureaucracies. We have to, our medical dollars are being paid to bureaucrats rather than to your lab or to your doctor or to your own care. That's what I don't like about it. In fact, that's what is the expense part. We're paying our money to bureaucrats rather than to the medical world. And the opt-out, I would rather see, before we go to an opt-out, I'm going to see a forensic, a forensic audit. audit of all of our charges and all of our expenses. We have right now what they call a review, a CPA review, which means that we just can review the money that we've spent. We don't know if it's actual needed money or if there's any pilfering of the system. That's why we need a forensic audit before we do any kind of audits. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, because the Affordable Care Act is my baby. I'm in the health insurance field. I look at claims, I code claims, but I go and end up on a patient's bill. So it's very important to me that when it gets denied by insurance companies or if they have any reason to deny it, they're going to. Even if we have the right wire off, but the surgery changed in the OR, we don't facilitate and get the money. So I'm a huge patient advocate. And the Affordable Care Act, I don't think people understand that me being able to put my children on my healthcare plan until they're 26, that gets them through college. They don't have an option. And if something happens to them, if they're in a car accident, that could be a $250,000 bill that they'll be bankrupt. Talk about having their college debt. They're done. So you need to have healthcare. Everyone should have affordable healthcare. And this is taking care of the people, the less fortunate. You know, some of this depends on how you were born, where you were born, you know, who your parents are. Do you have two parents together? I went into the workforce after high school, and I paid for myself to go to college two years later. Not everybody is lucky as me, and there's people that are way more fortunate than me. But it does come out of my pocket, but I'm glad to do that because it's a good feeling to take care of other people, and that's why I'm here. Another thing, pre-existing conditions. I used to code when there was pre-existing conditions. And I would have to go through a chart to see if that diagnosis was listed anywhere else back to six months, and that wouldn't be paid. Also, insurance companies now are trying to say, if you go into the ER, and they decide once they get that claim, they can deny the whole thing, and it'll go to patient responsibility. So you're talking, let's say my dad has chest pains, and he's like, I'm not going to go to the ER because what if it isn't a heart attack and it's anxiety? You know, it should not be left up to the insurance companies. Medicare is the best-run company. There's so much fraud and abuse against Medicare. You have physicians, if you look at, follow like the Becker's, you know, any of the healthcare magazines, you'll see doctors are misbilling on, you know, just fraud and abuse. Medicare's lost billions and billions of dollars, and they're still running. If this was a private company and everybody was coming at you and attacking you and stealing your money, they would close. And commercials follow Medicare. All commercials follow Medicare rules. They are the industry leader. Why we would ever think of changing anything with Medicare is crazy. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'll just comment on the opt-out, because I do feel that that's important. One piece I did, I want to make sure that we're clear on, clear on how the opt-out, how it works for us. Currently, the state formula is at $3.38, and that was established through the Cutler Gay Girl Act years ago. We have, we have an option to opt out of that, and because we opt out, we're now at $3.91. And we already talked, although we, because we do opt out, our middle levies are still in the lowest in comparing our, comparing small school districts to that of our neighbors. But what's important about that is without the opt-out, we would have a deficit of $9.1 million. So to make that up, what would we do? Would we cut teacher salary? Would we pay, would we have fewer teachers? Would we have bigger class sizes? And the reason why you'd have to look at that first is that of our $176 million budget, 85% of it goes to teacher salary benefits. So there would be a huge funding deficit, $9.1 million if we didn't opt out of Sioux Falls School District. And the beauty of being able to opt out is that we have different challenges in Sioux Falls, being that we're an urban school district than what they do in the rural population. So it's really important that we have those types of local controls. When we set our budget, first we looked at the needs, and then we look at what the state revenue can bring in to meet the needs of our Sioux Falls School District. That gives us our deficit. And then it's up to us locally to be able to make up that deficit through our middle levies. And there again, we have the lowest home owner occupied middle levy in comparison to all of our neighbors, Brandon Valley, Lenox Tee. We have the second lowest for the commercial middle levies in comparing us to our neighbors. So I'm really proud of the work that our Sioux Falls School District is doing with our overall budget and what that means to you all as taxpayers. We're good stewards of the resources that we get. Thanks.
We'll conclude this part of the program, but I think some of our candidates will be able to stay a little bit. Gavin Hunsell, over in Old Oakley. IPC is east of Minnesota, just behind the Minnesota I.D. Really convenient.
If you want to pay your dues, I'm here. Also, if you want to have an evening with Abba Rusk, I'm here. By the way, the National Rifle Association levies the same dues on their members as we do per year. But believe me, you can look at Tom and I, we don't go to fancy dress cars to get our clothes. Thank you.